Good afternoon. I'd like to open the Monday, November 15th, 2021 meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. As we accustomed, we will open our meeting with invocation and Commissioner Jerry Simpson, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the last board meeting before we observe the Thanksgiving holiday. Popular opinion is that the first Thanksgiving occurred in 1621 when the pilgrims celebrated their first harvest in the new world with a feast that lasted three days and was attended by the pilgrims and the Wapanoa Native Americans. Thanksgiving was recognized as a national holiday in 1863 by President Abraham Lincoln. Although numerous presidents had encouraged, with the exception of Thomas Jefferson, that is, a day of Thanksgiving and prayer, it was Lincoln who codified the holiday. I recently learned that Lincoln was, I'll use the word encouraged, by a woman named Sarah Joseph Hale. Hale, a noted author, often wrote editorials and articles about the holiday, and she lobbied state and federal officials to pass legislation creating a fixed National Day of Thanks on the last Thursday of November. She believed that such a unifying measure could help ease growing tensions and divisions between the northern and southern parts of the country. She urged Americans, and I quote, "to put aside sectional feelings and local incidents and rally around the unifying cause of Thanksgiving." We find ourselves today as a nation embroiled in tensions and divisions. Another noted author, the Apostle Paul, found himself embroiled in a similar situation in Thessalonica to the point he was ran out of town. In his letter to the Thessalonians, he wrote, "Give thanks in all circumstances. With that thought in mind, should you choose to do so, join with me in prayer." Heavenly Father, we come together again to discuss, to plan, to act on, to enact policy regarding the issues and needs of Union County. We are inadequate to fulfill that mission without your aid and support, so we ask your presence among us. Despite our differences and the challenges we face, we are truly blessed among nations. Help us to remain mindful of that fact and to humble ourselves as we seek consensus and strive toward the greater good. Grant us the courage to put aside pride and selfish desires as we work together to do what is best and in the long-term interest of our citizens. At this time of year, as we enjoy the fruits of our labor, keep us ever mindful of those less fortunate. We know there are those among us who suffer physically, financially, and emotionally. Help us to share in their suffering, and I pray your love and grace upon each of them. We are always mindful of those who sacrifice their time during the holiday season to keep us safe. We pray your protection on all who serve: healthcare workers, nursing home employees, law enforcement, firefighters, emergency services personnel, and our military both at home and abroad. Finally, Lord, we are thankful for those inalienable rights: life, liberty, and pursuit of morality and virtue, secured by our faith in you, our Creator, our Constitution, our country, and we pray our love and respect for one another. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. We had the pleasure of having the Union Academy Girls Varsity Volleyball Team to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear a little bit about the record there.
Which one would like to speak and tell us how your season went?
I can speak.
Okay.
Where are we going here?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. This season, Union Academy has made history by being the first team volleyball team at Union Academy, to win conference championship, regionals, and state championship. So yay!
Congratulations.
We went into our season, like, really blind. This was our first year in the new conference with Mount Pleasant, Greystone, and like all those schools. We were used to playing against other charter schools, like Mount Island Charter, Commune School of Davidson and stuff like that. So going into this new season, we were very surprised at how we were going, and we were very proud of ourselves, and especially with everyone in Union County and everyone at Union Academy showing us so much support. We were very excited and very humbled to be named state champions.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next, we have informal comments. We have two individuals signed up, Levine Scott, Scott Levine. Mr. Levine not in the hall, okay. We'll move on. Next is Brian Helms.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Brian Helms. I'm resident of Union County. Thanks for allowing me to speak. At our last meeting, our deputy county manager presented the recommendations of the committee formed to look at the potential uses of the $46 million in funds appropriated to Union County from ARPA. You may recall, but in June, I addressed this board and warned of the potential uses of these funds. While our county certainly has needs that this money can address, I was left amiss by the committee's recommendations. Let's look at each item. A, COVID mitigation, $7 million. What does this mean? We've got medical expenses, behavioral health care, and certain public health and safety staff. Is the plan to spend $7 million on vaccine clinics? How about those great social media vaccine propaganda campaigns from Union County government on Facebook? Are we hiring new positions and the salary and benefits that go along with them to help fight COVID? If that's the case, we're making a long-term investment with short-term money. It's not good business for Union County. We'll skip Point B for now. C, community and economic support, $9.3 million. Address negative economic and supply chain impact to workers, families, small businesses impacted industries, and county programs. How is Union County going to solve supply chain issues? Provide labor to the state of California to offload ships? Are we going to provide money to small businesses? D, administration. Managing coordinate the use of funds to ensure transparency and public accountability while maintaining a robust documentation and compliance methodology. So are we going to allocate $2.3 million to ensure transparency to the public in the use of this money? A few months ago, there were significant questions from the public regarding the transparency of the county budget and tax increases, and now we're going to invest $2.3 million to make sure that we're honest with the public? E, holdback. Set aside contingency reserve funds to provide flexibility over the period the funds are available. Union County already has extensive reserve funds. This line item should be classified as A-2 because it dedicates funds to a short-term issue with poorly defined goals. The way I read this is that we're going to allot a total of $14 million under a blanket COVID fund with no clear direction. The only viable recommendation is B, strategic investment in county services, $20.9 million, which I would advocate, this should be a lot more. More specifically, funding the water project, the short-line water project. This is something that existing residents will benefit from and will pay dividends to the county in the future. There is no excuse for a county our size and with our resources to have citizens with no access to water. No excuse. Citizens are tired of the runaround. I urge this board to disapprove of the recommendations from the committee and instead focus on something that would be beneficial to all citizens, such as water, and not necessarily sewer. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir. We have no public hearings this evening, so next is our employee recognition, and we are blessed to have employees that have been with us a number of years. First, Catherine Woodley with Human Resources, five years. Bjorn Hansen, Planning, five years. Lori May, Public Works, five years. Allison Bold, Social Services, five years. Robin Mobley, Social Services, five years. Ruben Vasquez, Social Services, five years. Dana Chestain, Tax Administration, five years. And with 20 years, we have Carolyn Carpenter. And 25 years, Jerry Masonmore with Tax Administration. November, we have retirements as well. Those have served us long and faithfully. Lisa Love with the Health Department, 13 years. Shallow Gardner with Sheriff's Office, 14 years. Dean Glenn, Facilities Management, 18 years. And Jerry Duffy, Solid Waste, 21 years. We want to thank our employees, all employees, not just the ones we recognize today, but that's what makes this county, Union County government, a great organization. Next, we have the consent agenda, and we have, at your desk, Commissioners, you have a modification to Item 21-394, and 21-398, it's documentation that will be amended in the consent agenda. Also, under new business, we have two items we want to add at just before the manager's comments. One is sharp business printer systems contract, and then the second item is purchase of real property, and those will be the last two items on our agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Remove.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to business, and our first item is 21-185, Advanced Metering Infrastructure AMI Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Did we approve the overall agenda as well as consent agenda?
Not a process in this new agenda package.
Okay, thank you very much.
I agree with you, though. I'd like to see it, but...
Just want to get 240 on the road there.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, though.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager, and everyone else in the room. I'm actually really excited to talk to you about AMI today because I think all of you are actually in favor of it. So let me just get started and give you a brief overview of what we're intending to do. You've got some of this on Friday at the workshop, but this will fill in a little bit more of the detail as to the whys and wherefores of what we're trying to do. So if you think about the evolution of how a utility runs, and you probably saw gentlemen, gentlewomen come out to your house once a month, go to the side or to the back and read your meter every month, if you had an account with Union County Water. We did that for every account that we had. We sent somebody out, and they pulled up, got out of their vehicle, went to your, found your meter, read your meter, got back in the car, drove to the next house, and they did that for every account that we had. With modern technology, we're able to do so much more, and so we've moved away from reading every meter to actually just driving by every meter, and that is what's called automated meter reading. So instead of having 10 people whose entire job was just to read meters five days a week, we have two people now. So two people are doing the job of 10 with the use of technology. And so all they do, and we actually do this third shift, so we do this at night where there's very little traffic, so they can be more efficient in terms of the drive time and how many readers, meters they can read. They just drive by every neighborhood, every meter, and then the meter talks wirelessly to a receiver in the vehicle, and so that's how we get all the data. And then we just bring it on into the office, plug it in, and then that's how we get all the data that we need to bill for water usage. There is actually a newer technology, which we have not yet implemented, and which we've done some research and we actually want to talk to you about, and that's called Advanced Metering Infrastructure, which is using wireless technology, the same thing that's on your cellphones, to actually transmit data from a customer's meter directly to, I'll call it, the home office, you know, our database, without having the middleman of a meter tech driving around in a vehicle collecting that data for us. And so that's the future, and the future is here. The one thing I will tell you is that we are not cutting edge in this. We're not the first. This is technology that's been, I will say, it's been used in other utilities in North Carolina and around the country and around the world, so we're not first. And this is not the kind of thing that I would want to be first because there's cost to it, because for us, we're talking about 56,000 meters. But wireless technology is a proven technology. The meters are still the meters. It's just a matter of using the airwaves to get that data to us. So why do we care? As a utility, what it means is it allows us to manage real-time data to manage the water system. So to give you a case in point, so when we send out somebody monthly to get that data, for each customer, every year, we have 12 points of data, every meter reading, once a month, so we get it 12 times a year. So we know what's happening with your water usage 12 times a year. My screen just, oh, there it goes. With Advanced Metering Infrastructure, if, you know, we can calibrate to whatever setting we want, but if we calibrated it to get data every hour, we could get 8,760 data points on every customer. So we can actually tell a customer if their water usage has spiked all of a sudden because they got a leak in their pipe. That's not something we can do now. We just don't have the data to be able to do that. But with more data, we can do, it's exciting because there's so much more that we can do to benefit our customers. It'll be great for us in terms of operations and workflow, rather than reacting, and we'll get, use the leaks as an example again, rather than waiting for a customer to call and say, "Hey, why is my water bill three times what it used to be last month?" and having to go out and check for leaks. We can actually see in our system and use computers and data analysis to say, "Hey, that person's meter is spinning three times faster than it should be." We can actually send someone out proactively to check for meters. If the customer wanted, they can set up alerts so that if their water usage spikes, they actually get a mobile phone alert or an email alert telling them to check their system for leaks or for a faucet that's been turned on. So there's a lot of things that we can do. It'll let us be more proactive as a utility rather than reactive. It'll also help us with water conservation. The example I'd give you here is every meter, including irrigation meters, will have this technology tied to it. We will know when somebody irrigates their lawn. We will know if it's a drought situation. We'll know what meters are turning on and off and when they are turning on and off. So we'll be able to keep track. We'll be able to talk to customers. We'll be able to help manage water usage in droughts, manage irrigation during times when it shouldn't be. So we'll, there's just, it has capability that allows us to be a much more proactive, efficient, effective utility. But lastly, and this is probably the most important thing, this will transform the customer experience. And what I mean by that is all this data allows us to do so much more for our customers than what we do now. They use water, we send them a bill, they pay the bill. But they will be able, they will be able to tell us what they think of how the system is working. They'll be able to set up their own alerts, notifications for water usage. They will be able to get stuff electronically, and, you know, I got, there's a little graphic here of just a generic city water portal, but they will be able to get information on their smartphone or on their computer at home versus just on a bill once a month. So I'm really excited by what we can do for our customers in terms of getting them more information about their water usage so that they can use water better. How does it work? So really, I'm going to start here at a person's home, so this is obviously somebody's residence, and so what we're going to do is attach a transmitter to their water meter. Water and technology generally don't mix, so it's taken a while for the industry to figure out how to get the two to work well together. But now they've done it such that we can read the meter, it'll transmit via, you know, cellular to, we'll call it the cloud, and then from that central data storage, both the customer will be able to access their data, and we will be accessed, be able to access the data such that we can do detailed analysis and reports and figure out how best to manage our system. I wanted to at least give you some visuals as to what those parts look like. So here, this is your water meter that's connecting both the system to the residential home, and then what you have here is a transmitter, and you also have a top-down view of the transmitter. So this is the electronics connected to the water meter that'll transmit data however frequently we want it to be transmitted. And then, so that's basically what's going on at the home. In terms of the infrastructure system-wide, we are going to install these things called base stations. So they're, think of them as regional collection nodes. They will gather all the data from the residences or the transmitters in their area, and then we will use these towers, these antennas that'll go on towers, to transmit that data to our, to the home office so that we can have it consolidated and then be able to do some analysis on it. And these pictures are provided by our vendor, so these are the actual, you know, what you're seeing are visuals of the actual product. That's not our water tower, but you get an idea of what that transmission tower will look like. For us, Union County, we've been researching this since 2018. We did a feasibility study, and it was really driven by the fact that we were having meters fail at a high rate. You know, our meters were getting older, they were failing more frequently, so it really was an opportunity for us to do something different. We looked at what the capital cost would be to invest in this type of infrastructure as well as what would it cost us to operate. In 2019, we issued an RFP for AMI compatibility. We selected a company, there were several companies, we selected Census. Bonds were actually issued for AMI implementation. And then in 2020, we actually updated the data, working with Census, to figure out how many transmission towers, how many base stations do we need in order to get enough coverage that we can cover the entire service area that we are responsible for. So we have propagation maps that shows us what's necessary to manage our system in an AMI environment. And then today, we're in 2021, and today, I'm really asking you for a recommendation to proceed with Census as our sole source vendor for AMI, and that's the point of this presentation. So for us, what does that mean? We currently use AMR. We have about 56,000 meters in our system, and, you know, every year, that number grows as we add more customers to our, you know, customer base. Our meters are, we have 9,000 Census meters, which are basically our newest, most advanced meters that we have. We have, the Badger meters are also very modern. We have other meters, we have about 20,000 other meters that are of various mix and models, and those are our oldest meters, and those are the ones that are failing more frequently. So the Badger meters have a significant useful life left, so we're going to repurpose those, and they can, they are compatible with the transmitter, so they can work with them. Obviously, the Census meters will work with Census transmitters. So we'll have to refit or swap out 20,000 meters and, you know, then install the transmitters on top of that. So the scope of this AMI project for us, we're looking at 17 base stations to cover the entire county, and that is no property will be necessary because they're all cited on Union County property. 27,000 new meters, 56,000 transmitters, and then they will all work with cellular bandwidth that we will lease from Census. They own it, so there won't be anything else on that band other than us. So it will just be us, so there will be no interference with, you know, 911 calls or emergency calls or cellphones or anything else, just us. All the installation of all the equipment, so we don't have the staff on hand to swap out 27,000 meters because they're already doing work. So part of the scope of this work is for Census to go in and swap out 27,000 meters, and they have crews that do just that, so we expect it to be pretty efficient installation and setup. And then there's a software component to it as well so that we can collect the data, analyze it, and then, you know, have that integrate and work with our billing system. So in terms of the project timeline, just think of it as in two phases. Phase one is the next four to six months, and that really is setting up the sort of the network infrastructure, the base stations, the tower, and the software. So we're going to do that first, and then in phase two, we are going to go in and swap out 27,000 meters and install 56,000 transmitters. And again, as our customer base grows, that number will also grow as well. In terms of the budget, this is a program budget that sits at around $16.5 million, 16.6. The contract with Ferguson, which is our vendor through the RFP, is about $13.6 million, and you can see how that cost breaks out for transmitters and meters and other things along the way. The one thing I will tell you, this does not include the cost of a contract for creation, development, installation of a customer portal. We're not quite there yet, and so I'm just going to preview for you that you're probably looking at another contract related to AMI somewhere in the near future. I just don't have a timeframe for that yet. We are recommending sole source for two reasons. One, we already have existing Census and Badger meters, and so there was a big compatibility issue. We wanted to repurpose as much existing technology as we could to keep our costs as low as possible, and so it didn't make sense to go with another vendor simply because then that would meant having to swap out another 30,000 meters on top of what we're doing. And since they've already been working with us, we think this is the fastest road to implementation, and it does meet all the state requirements for a sole source contract. And I think in your package was a two-page, three-page memo that sort of outlines the justification for why we think sole source makes sense because Census was the only vendor that was capable of taking our existing infrastructure and repurposing it to an AMI And so the agenda item that's a part of your packet is really asking for three things. One, it's asking for you to adopt Capital Projects Ordinance 292, which adds $1 million to the project so that, you know, as we need it, we'll spend it. It's also asking you to approve the purchase of water meters, the AMI transmitters, base stations, and associated apparatus, supplies, and equipment through an agreement with Ferguson Enterprises with apparatus, supplies, and equipment standardization and compatibility as the overriding consideration in this purchase as set forth in NCGS 143-129E6. And it's asking you to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Ferguson Enterprises LLC in the amount of $13,657,018.17 that is substantially consistent with this agreement. That is all I got, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Well, I'll make a motion. We approve the recommended action, I can read it identically like you just finished, but the recommended action for this evening for the AMI meters. Any further discussion?
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Since this is a deep process, is there any estimate on cost savings on all of that getting in and out of the vehicle?
Well, right now, we only have two individuals that are doing this, so honestly, as tough as the work is, the salary of a meter tech isn't that much. And so if you wanted, if you thought you were going to eliminate two positions, you're really not saving that much money in terms of salary or operating cost in terms of the vehicles. We actually have enough work that we can repurpose those two individuals to do other things that we are currently not doing, but I get ahead of myself. I know the question, but I get ahead of myself because that's not something I've talked to the manager about, and that's probably going to show up in the next budget or two in terms of discussion.
Any questions?
It should eliminate some of the communication Commissioners have with people I rate that all of a sudden they got a $600 water bill.
I was thinking about that, too, that really there is a benefit to you in that individuals will be able to see it, customers will be able to see it, and we can work with them directly without having to, for them to call a Commissioner that complain about a water bill.
Well, they could fix the problem before it generates that kind of situation, so... Commissioner Rushing.
The, you said that the customer portal, though, is not part of this, correct?
No, no, sir, not at all. That's a separate contract, and that's still being worked on.
What do we think, what's estimated cost of that?
I actually don't have, I don't have an estimate for you. I can get that number for you from our staff, but I don't have that in front of me.
Because of all things, what Chairman Helms just discussed, that would be a wonderful thing, that somebody can tell if their water is unusual, something's going ahead, and, you know, if they've had a leak or if they have a toilet that's overflowing and, you know, their water use is increasing, but they would have to monitor that. Are we... know, their water use is increasing. But they would have to monitor that. Are we, are we going to send them notices without the customer portal, or?
Well, we can, it'd be just like anything else that you see on your phone, if you can set up. So, you know, we envision a system where a customer will have the ability to set notifications. You know, once their water bill hits a certain dollar threshold, it'll automatically send them a notification, "Hey, you spent $100 worth of water this month so far." It may not be an issue, but they'll get notifications. If they're spending, if the rate of spend goes, you know, triples, it may automatically trigger, trigger an alert. And we're kind of looking at how we can do that, and what kind of capabilities we can give the customer to control the notifications that they receive.
Okay, good. Yeah, that, that being the big benefit of this, I would hate to, you to come back and say, oh, and it's 10 million for the customer portal, it's not going to-
We do not believe it's going to be 10 million for the customer portal.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Andy Fupp, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so I understand, even without a new customer portal, as these transmitters get installed, as the additional smart meters get installed, the current website, customers can still access that, and they'll see all this new data. So instead of that one data point once a month, they can go in through the existing portal and see, you know, what is it, every hour, you know, data that's coming in every hour?
Well, that, that may be true. I don't know that for sure. My staff would know that, and, and I'm going to say yes. And if it's different, I will, I will come and tell you guys different.
Okay. I'd just like to say that, you know, I started off kind of, honestly, kind of skeptical of this, because I looked at the price tag. I noticed that the Census technology was proprietary. But as I dug into this further, and as I talked with Aubrey Lofton about it, I became more and more confident in this as a solution. You know, $14,000 and change is a lot, but when you think about it, there are 56,000.
I think you mean 14 million.
Yeah, but I mean, 14 million, I'm sorry. About 14 million dollars, but there's 56,000 new transmitters that are going out, right?
Mm-hmm.
And 20, 27,000 new meters. So that's a lot of, that's a lot of equipment, that's a lot of installation. And I think like most commissioners, I'm excited at the prospect that, you know, when customers have a leak, you know, instead of having a one-month lag and then getting a, you know, a nasty surprise in their bill, that they're, you know, facing a $400 or $500 bill, you know, we have the opportunity to nip that in the butt a little bit quicker, and, you know, find out sooner, because the data we're getting is happening with such, such more, a much more discrete frequency. So I definitely support this, and am looking forward to having it rolled out.
Okay. One more question, Commissioner Rushing.
You did mention something that caught my attention about if we have a drought, and somebody's watering their lawn. Will we be able to access that through this? And will you be writing citations or tickets, or?
I don't know that we've gotten that far. I know what we can do capability-wise in terms of seeing who's doing what with the water and when they're doing it. But I don't know that we've discussed using the system to monitor for fines or anything like that. So that would be something to discuss with, you know, the manager. And if the recommendation is due to that, we'd certainly bring that before the board, but that's not something that we've discussed at this point.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Hume.
Thank you.
Next item is 21-382, RZ 2021-005, Sharon Rezoning. Bjorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Watson, this is the decisional agenda item related to a rezoning at Sharon Road near the Monroe Expressway, where you had the public hearing two weeks ago. Again, this is a request to rezone 3.7 acres from R20 to RA20. The specific reason why is to allow cattle on the site. This is a straight rezoning, meaning that it's just rezoned to RA20 or not, there's no conditions associated with it. This is the depiction of the surrounding area, large lot residential, but there is commercial and industrial behind it and the expressway directly behind this site here. It's immediately adjacent to Monroe and Indian Trail. And in response to your question, Commissioner Williams, from the last meeting, this, if there was a residential recommendation for land use in this area, this would fall into a donut hole. But because it's all commercial or industrial recommendations, it didn't apply here. So going to the area, this really gives a good depiction how it's, you know, a pocket of residential with a lot of commercial and industrial surrounding it. And the applicant is here to answer any additional questions you may have. Otherwise, the request before you is to consider approving it. We recommend approval, planning board recommended approval. There were no comments at the hearing two weeks ago, except for the applicant himself. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or from the applicant.
Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you. Bjorn, if you would go back a couple slides to the map.
Which one, sir?
Keep going. The overhead of the-
Okay.
There you go. The property across the street, large open area, is that a pasture?
It's-
What's that zone, do you know?
Go back. That is zoned, some sort of business within Indian, within Stallings.
Okay, so that's-
Or, wait, or is it this one?
The yellow.
The yellow, I'm sorry. Yellow is zoned R20, Union County.
R20.
We have had interest from nearby businesses in rezoning and developing that, but nothing's been submitted. So as of right now, it's R20.
Thank you. And my understanding from the applicant last time is that there's no fence, there's no horse and no cows at the present time?
No.
Is there any restrictions on the number of animals that can be on that?
In terms of the horses, yes. That's as the one acre per horse, based on the fenced in area, and the cows is unlimited.
With cows, there's no restriction?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Bjorn, does, does the designation R20 and RA20 specify that cattle are allowed on R20? Is that defined in the definition of RA20? Or did, or did we just decide to put that in the information because the applicant had requested?
It's because of the non-residential ag uses, Lee's helping me out. That's the A aspect of it. That was, that's, that is a specific call-out.
Does it say cattle, and horses, and llamas, and pigs, and goats?
Well, that's where the interpretation comes in, in terms of livestock versus pets, and that's why the horses are spelled out as the one per acre, and the cattle is essentially falling under the llamas, and emus, or goats, or whatever else.
So it's not defined, what you're saying?
No.
Doesn't mention?
No, it's everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Livestock.
Thank you.
Does any of our board members be having the agricultural background in their recommendation for how much land for cattle? Dennis, I thought you mentioned it to me one time.
Well, if he's, from my experience, and of course Jerry's got cows, two to three would be the max there, if he's trying to graze them and not feed them. But I was told at the last hearing that we can't limit the number.
There's water quality regs out there with regard to runoff and one thing or another. I don't know the, I don't know the individual's intended use. I don't pay the taxes on this individual's property, so, so I wouldn't know how he plans to manage his cattle, or, or what his plans are. For, I assume he bought the property, he's going to pay taxes on it. So if it's an acceptable use under RA20, I don't, regardless of my expertise, I don't think it's my place to tell him how to run his operation.
Commissioner Rushing.
The, I do have some concerns with, with this, especially the number and the breeds and the, and the types of animals, or whatever. If you had pigs there, and it's not necessarily the current landowner, but the next landowner, and the following landowner, we've rezoned so many properties that basically were sold just as soon as they were rezoned to someone else. And, you know, if, just fitting in with right there beside the bypass, animals getting loose, potential of getting on the expressway, I'm just not in support of it. Again, not, nothing to do with the current owner, or any, any issues there. It's just, once you open this door, it's going to be harder to close it. And, and that, that area is just not the agriculture, you know, center, I guess, of Union County. So, so, you know, I'm just not really supportive of going to that with uncertainties of how many animals can be kept there.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move back to motion.
Be a motion to deny.
Motion to deny rezoning petition, RZ 2021-005, rezoning property appearing on tax map as parcel 07-102-158A, advanced township from R20 to RA20, and adopt consistency statement and reasonable statement for it.
Okay. Have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Take that as the motion is-
Yeah, and a motion on the other side.
Do we have to make a separate vote? Okay, all right. Okay, a motion to approve the rezoning from R20 to R20A?
Can I have clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We just had a motion to deny, did we not?
Yes, but what I heard from our attorneys is that we need to retake another vote.
If you deny it, if you're going to bring it back up, you have to make another motion to consider this. You can let it die, and that can be it.
So, I think what you understand is that technically, a denial of a, since the motion to deny it and not pass is not an automatic approval. So the board actually has to take action to approve the request. So it actually requires a majority vote to approve the request. If there was not a majority vote to deny the request, it still also requires a majority vote to approve the request.
Okay, okay, I'm a little slow. What, we didn't have a majority to deny it?
You did not. It was, I believe, a three to two motion to not deny, to not deny the request. So, Mr., I believe, you voted, the vote to deny failed.
Okay, I wasn't paying attention. I didn't, I thought it was three to, to deny it, I'm sorry.
It was two to three to deny.
Got a motion fail.
Okay.
So now someone can make a counter motion in the opposite direction.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
We, shall I, shall I read the specifics, or?
You may.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve rezoning petition, RZ 2021-005, rezon the property appearing on tax map as parcel 07-102-158A, advanced township from R20 to RA20, and adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for approval. That's my motion.
Okay.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
I have some discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
It was approved by staff, it was approved by planning board, and it's, it's an accepted, or not a defined use, or it's, I assume an accepted use under RA20.
Okay.
Is the basis of my motion to approve.
Okay.
So I'll make that clear.
Have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Bjorn, I think you've got the next one. You get to stay up there.
I do, thank you.
Union County 2050 Strategy Implementation Committee recruitment.
Thank you. So this is a follow-up from back in August, when the comprehensive plan was adopted. There were several strategies that were recommended that require some fleshing out, and we would like the assistance of some residents from throughout the county to assist us in developing recommendations for you to consider later in 2022. And so these committees are being recommended with the outreach process for you to approve. These are the six strategies: stormwater development standards, school siting requirements, open space in rural areas, cluster allowance in rural areas, alliter task force, and then broadband internet. How we would go about doing this is in November, pending approval by you. We would put this out on social media, contact the municipalities, ask them to also post it through their social media accounts, and, and have copies of the paper applications available in their town halls. We would reach out to all 60-plus members of the Union County 2050 process, to see if any of them want to serve. And several have already said, yeah, I want to be considered for this. And also have a media release in December. We will analyze the applications and make recommendations with five per committee. We're going to look to balance it based on experience, geography, and gender. In January, we'll present these recommendations to you at the board, and have them appointed. And then from February through August, conduct the work and provide recommendations to you. And do have a, the online applications is what it looks like. Same information, you click as many as you want. If you want to be considered for one, that's fine. If you want to be considered for all six, you can do that. Click Terms of Gender, ZIP Code, whether you're in or out of a municipality, type in information about their experience, and then their contact information, and we will consider it. So pending any questions, that completes my presentation.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we have a requested action to approve the process and authorize staff to open a committee application period. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Bjorn.
Thank you.
Next, we have ARPA funding allocation. Michelle Lancaster will present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My presentation here. Many of these slides are going to be duplicate from the last meeting, so I'm going to go through them rather quickly and get to the, the recommendations and an additional slide that we've added with some timeline information. But just for folks to, to know who are watching or who are here, a reminder that we are receiving $46.6 million in Recovery Act funding. That's directly to the county. We have received half of that, and we expect the remaining half in approximately six to 18 months. Here, I've listed the funding objectives, which I know that you are all familiar with, and a reminder that municipalities receive funds directly in this round of funding. And here are just some of the, the broad uses that are allowed for the county to utilize these funds. And then, again, a reminder of what the Recovery Act Committee, the folks that I had put, pulled together, who spent several hours and about a month working through their own recommendations, and how they kind of leveled those out over three different levels, just as a reminder. And then this, this looks a little different than the last recommendation that you saw from me. So, you know, we asked for feedback, we got feedback, we had some additional discussion amongst staff. And today, what you're seeing is a new recommendation that really considers all the core businesses that the county is responsible for, and things that we think are important to how we do business in Union County, and things that are important to the community. So just to highlight the recommendations, you'll see that for COVID mitigation, we're recommending a 9% allocation, or $4.5 million. For strategic investments in county services, 65% of the funds, or $30 million. For community and economic support, 10% of the allocation, or $4.8 million. And for administration, 5% of the allocation, or $2.3 million. And as we had talked about at the last meeting, we are recommending a holdback of 11%, at this time, of $5 million, as we can continue to work through the ever-changing environment that we have with these funds and with the COVID pandemic. This is a new slide that we added that really is a high-level implementation timeframe, so that you can see that really, beginning now and going through 2027, we anticipate lots of activity. We have some, you know- We have some, you know, near-term recovery items that we think we can start to implement in, uh, next fiscal year in community and economic support with, uh, really things that we have to do in terms of planning and doing contractual relationships and then working through reimbursement. We have more of the long-term growth in that strategic investment in county services bucket, where you would have planning, design, contracts, permitting, potential, um, land acquisition and construction, and then ongoing support as we work through the COVID mitigation, uh, strategies that we have that can, can cover, um, many areas as we've indicated here, with medical expenses, behavioral health care, and certain, uh, public health and safety staff that we know that, um, our sheriff and public health may be requesting going forward. So again, just another reminder that the rules are still not final. We keep waiting on the final rules. Um, we know that there are ongoing congressional efforts, there is additional funding that has been made available through other avenues, and as I'd mentioned the last time, there's some effort to give much more flexibility in how funds can be used and currently is allowed, and we're still waiting on a state budget, which I think we'll see tonight, perhaps. Um, so we'll have some idea in how the state plans to use these funds. And so next steps for staff is we have begun to implement our internal structure, um, so that we'll start reviewing projects and programs, um, and then we will, will bring to you a monthly report beginning next week, I mean, next month, I'm sorry, and we will also bring all programs and projects for approval in each category to the board, uh, before we move forward with any expenditure. Um, so that is the recommendation today. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion as follows. And I think with all we're looking at, uh, this will sort of dot all the i's and cross all the t's. A, for COVID mitigation, 10% allocation, $4.65 million. B, for strategic investments in county services, 70% allocation, $32,550,000. Item C, for community and economic support, 10% allocation, $4.65 million. D, for administration, and, uh, I've had some talk with county manager Watson and deputy manager Lancaster, this is a max. We think we can do it for less. I understand some citizens' concerns about it costing this much, but that was 5%. And five, E, for holdback, 5% allocation, which would be 2.325 million. I believe that these allocations align with the community input we have received and provides direction to staff to bring back programs and projects that align within these areas and percentages. I would also ask staff to continue to explore opportunities for additional funding for water projects at the federal and state levels.
Okay.
And I would welcome some discussion.
Any discussion? Mr. Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am glad to see that number go up, uh, on the water. Um, I'll be supporting the motion. Um, the, um, the concerns I think I have, other than that, were, were addressed when you gave the presentation, so if there were gonna be bonuses or any expenditures of the funds, they will be brought before the Board of Commissioners for approval?
Yes, sir. As, the only thing that we have told you so far that we, um, asked for support for was for our insurance expenditures, but everything else will come to you and you will be getting a, what I'm gonna call a monthly dashboard of, of where the money and projects are, so that you can see those. And each of these buckets are, as we work through this and as you saw the timeline, this has a very long runway. So if we get to a point where we don't need the administration dollars, you will have the ability to move those into other buckets, um, as well as all the other buckets that are there as well, and you'll be able to make those decisions.
So, so for example, if, um, it came back that it was a million less than, than you predicted, that million could be shifted into water as well?
Absolutely.
Down the road. Um, one thing that I haven't seen before, I don't think, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is was property tax relief? What does that mean?
So that, that was, again, that slide just has brought the broad array of services that were listed in the Recovery Act funds. That is not being recommended, that was not recommended by the group. That's just showing you that broad, I think it was in an earlier presentation, uh, when we had the committee, and I just picked that slide up from that presentation.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was, I wasn't aware that we could offset property taxes with it, other than, other than reimbursing ourselves for past COVID related.
Past expenditures, right.
Right. So it's not that we could just give everybody a tax cut?
Right.
Okay.
That, that is not what that means. No, that is not what that means at all.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, again, um, this is, this has been a hard process and it's, you know, but it's, uh, I do think that the water usage, again, I'm glad to see that it's gone up from, from the recommendation from staff, and, and I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll be supporting this motion as well. Um, I like how, um, we've, uh, basically organized this in terms of categories. Uh, there are a number of staff recommendations, um, under each of these that, um, I think are, uh, you know, are worthy, uh, areas for, for these federal dollars. But I also think it's important to just make sure the public understands where the majority of this money is going and, and what the purpose is, and just, so we're all clear up here on the dais, that this 70% allocation, this 32 and a half million plus, uh, in ARPA funds, that's to extend county water. You know, that is to, uh, to my mind, to make a modest down payment on a multi-decade promise, um, that's been made to residents of the county, uh, to get water. Uh, it's not for, uh, facilitating more development. I've, I've heard that out there. Uh, that's not what this is, and, uh, it's for people who live here, who, uh, have wells and, uh, septic tanks. Um, many of those wells are, are bad wells. Um, it's to deliver county water. Um, and it's also important, I think, to say that, uh, look, this is a, um, I don't want to say a drop in the bucket, but it's a small step, uh, in a larger issue. You know, last Friday, we had a work group, uh, and, uh, Brown and Caldwell, the consultant of the county, is engaged, uh, to do our water and sewer master planning. Uh, they told us it would be about $2 billion, I think it was, a little more than $2 billion, uh, to extend, uh, county water, uh, throughout the county. And I think it was a little over 1,000 miles of, of roads that don't currently have county water. Um, so I think it's also important that, uh, you know, that we just be, that we're clear about, um, the size of that, and that it's not going to be, uh, a federal program, you know, that solves this for us. You know, we may get some additional dollars that get dropped in our lap from, uh, this infrastructure bill that, that Congress has passed and, and President Biden has signed. Uh, but let's be clear, I mean, this, these federal dollars and even any state dollars that we might get, if the, uh, if Raleigh can agree on a budget, is a small fraction of, of the, the issue here. So, to the extent that there is will to address that larger problem, you know, we have to talk about how we pay for it. And, uh, you know, I, you know, I leave that for future discussions of the board. But, uh, you know, even if it's half of the $2 billion that Brown and Caldwell said it would cost, that's a lot of money. Um, last but not least, um, you know, one thing I want to say about all these funds that are going to extending county water, um, you know, it's, I think it's important to note that none of these funds are going to, uh, to help facilitate more development, they're not going to system efficiencies. I think it's important that we look to our towns, that we look to our, um, municipalities throughout Union County, and invite them to be partners with us in this system, this water and sewer system. Uh, and by partners, I mean capital partners. Help us to pay for some of these projects in terms of system expansion, um, because we can't just keep going back to ratepayers and expect them to pay for all of the expense of maintaining and expanding our system. So, I, I hope that, uh, in subsequent, um, meetings, uh, we can embrace in a serious way just how we bring the towns in as capital investment partners and, and set the expectation that they're gonna help pay for some of these, uh, water and sewer, uh, improvements and expansions. Thank you.
I, uh, I will not be supporting it. We've had this conversation already, Michelle. Uh, I, uh, going back, looking at the funding details, I think, uh, the intent was to help the entire county. Uh, I think, uh, you know, I went back looking some things like, uh, Level 1, I assume that's a higher priority. Uh, didn't hear anything about broadband. I probably heard more about broadband than I've heard about water. And I can tell you, and I think you can go back and look at my history, I have been one of the strongest supporters of the short line extension, and it's very thankful that our county manager stepped up and made this program financially viable with his, uh, introducing the $5 million annually for, for doing it. And I, and I support that. And I support some of this money to go for water infrastructure, for relieving our citizens that have bad wells, but just not to this magnitude and not address other areas of the county and other, uh, needs such as broadband, uh, behavioral health is not cheap. And, you know, so, uh, you know, we've got parks, we've got needs in our parks. Sheriff's office has needs. So, um, it's, I support the process, just not the magnitude of the 70% going to, uh, to one, one item. Commissioner Rushing.
Mr. Chairman, I would, you know, echo, you know, what David was saying, you know, we, we've had several, uh, comments, we've been discussing flushing lines and things like that, and the ability that this gives us to complete loops, to end dead-end lines on main highways and things like that is gonna be beneficial to the system. Every dollar that we invest in this, um, is gonna be returned, uh, to additional dollars for more citizens in the short line extension program, uh, getting water close to people so that they can access it. And the, the cost of it, as you stated, you know, the $2 billion figure that was given to us, if we get it close to people, they can access it just as the developers do now. 20 homes on a short road can get that close to them so that they can, they'll be paying, uh, fees, that they'll be paying water bills from now on. So, it's not just a county project, this will turn into being a community project and, and the whole community, um, you know, whether, uh, just getting, again, closing those loops, getting it close to them would be beneficial. And I'd encourage you, Mr. Chairman, I, I know your heart. I mean, I know that you have been dedicated to water for the, what, six, seven years that, that I've been on the board with you. I've been very impressed, uh, in your past, your leadership on, on water to the county. Um, you know, just, just sitting in meetings with you, I, I think that you would like the seawater to everybody that, that could get it. And I know this doesn't do the complete job, but it's that seed that we need. I, I would encourage you to change your vote. I, I think there's three votes in favor of it.
I realize that.
And I'd like to see five. I'd like to see five. Uh, I think that that would, I think that sends a strong message to Union County citizens. Um, so I, I'd ask you to change your mind on this because this is, this is gonna be a grant, I mean, this, this is gonna be a life-changing thing for some people, uh, to be able to get this water. And, and it's gonna be an opportunity to use the 5 million per year that we've committed, and I would encourage the board to keep committing that 5 million to the short line extension program that we've already done. This is, this is beyond politics, this is to people's safety and lives, and you know that. I, I don't have to tell you that. And I understand broadband and other things, living out in the country where I do, and children having to do homework with, uh, having to go places that do have internet so they can do their homework's important, but, but drinking water is, is a number-one safety issue, so I would encourage you, please, please vote with us on this. I'd, I'd encourage everybody to vote for this.
One of the things that, I had a conversation with one of our legislative representatives, and, uh, hopefully tonight we'll hear that they're sending us some money to fall into this category as well. And I know federal, there's potential for that as well. So, um, it, I have no less value about safe drinking water and what we do, but I also know that there are a lot of needs in the county that, uh, funds like this will maybe be one of the few opportunities we have to address, and, uh, I'll, uh, appreciate your, your comments, Commissioner Rushing, and, uh, but I will be maintaining my vote against it. So we have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Uh. Our next item is 21-420, Options for Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting Schedule, and Michelle?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, just briefly, at the last meeting, you had some discussion about changing your meeting schedule, I think with the primary goal of trying to be consistent in the meeting times so that we didn't have one in the afternoon and one in the evening. And so, uh, what I sent to you, I think, Friday afternoon and what you have to, to this afternoon in front of you is a schedule that would change our meeting times beginning in January to both meeting times at 6:00 PM for all regular meetings. And so this, this schedule outlines all the, the dates that we would be meeting. Um, if this is the, the direction the board would like to go in, we will have an agenda item on your next agenda with a resolution and this schedule for your adoption. So it's as simple as all regular meetings at 6:00 PM unless there's some desire to do a different time.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, your recommendation for 2022 regular meeting schedule with meeting times at 6 o'clock. Uh, we've had speakers in the past say it was difficult for them to get off work to come, and I think this helps facilitate that, but it also, um, is less impactful on staff a little bit, starting at 6 instead of 7, so I'll make a motion we accept it. Commissioner Simpson.
Commissioner Rushing, I think, made the comment that the reason we needed to go to 6 o'clock on both meetings was I couldn't remember which day was 6 and which was 3, but I'm gonna overlook that and support your motion.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner Rushing.
Yeah, I, I know you can remember, Jim. Um, just like today, though, my daughter, we have to pick her up from school every day because she goes to charter school, and, you know, I almost tried to see if the volleyball team would give her a ride over here just because we, we couldn't close our business and do everything at one time. So I, I do think that this, um, I think this addresses some of the desires of staff, you know, of not hanging around all night, and, and I would encourage the board as, as good, good stewards of time maybe to, uh, shorten our meetings so, so that it doesn't take too long to, to get through with it. But 6 o'clock seems to be a good compromise and good, uh, it'll be stable and, and people won't have to remember which, uh, time we have to come, so I, I do think that is important. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. We had two items we had, we, uh, added to the agenda. The first was Sharp Business Systems printer contract, and Chris, you want to, uh, give us some guidance on this, please, sir?
Hello.
How you doing, sir?
So, um, the reason why I ended up on the agenda on Friday is when we received the first initial draft of the, um, agreement for Sharp for copiers. The actual requesting us to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. Some background on why we're doing that is currently we have a managed print service agreement with RICO that finishes at the end of January, and we did in September of 21, a RFP to, um, bid out the managed print services, and we created an evaluation team of all the business managers and the different departments, along with finance and HR. The evaluation team came back with a vendor of choice being Sharp Business Systems, and given the, uh, timing of your meetings and moving out of the copiers from RICO and adding Sharp with the supply chain and everything, we were trying to give enough leeway to have the copiers added to, um, this current, um, period versus. the copiers added to this current period versus trying to extend RICO and having RICO and Sharp at the exact same time. And so the financial impact of that was going to be a total contract cost for three-year period of $585,000. The estimated cost for each fiscal year will be included in the annual operating budget ordinance adoption. The points of note, in going with Sharp, the current potential savings will be, we've got 36% cost savings in black and white, and 8% cost savings in color, with no monthly minimums. In our current RICO contract, we have monthly minimums, and in moving this, this will be pay-as-per-click. Any questions?
I have a question. Were they your lowest bidder at Sharp?
Yes.
Or is this, they were your lowest bidder? And they have demonstrated proficiency in all the models that fall underneath the contract?
Yes. And they were the previous vendor before we had moved to RICO, I believe, 10 years ago.
Technology's changed a lot in the last 10 years.
Yeah.
I know, I used to be a printer service manager, so, okay. So, any other discussions? Okay, action request authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with the agenda item. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Brian, you want to talk to us about some real property?
Yes, sir. Previously, the board had authorized us to negotiate purchase of property. This is for Friendly Baptist Church property. This had to do with an issue with a septic system design and a failing system. We have successfully negotiated, I should say, our county attorney, Richard Long, successfully negotiated a price with those property owners. At this time, what we need is the board's approval to move forward with that so that Mr. Long can establish a closing date and get that taken care of. We didn't have that information until later, that's why I didn't make it on the original draft agenda, and that's why we're asking for you to consider that today so we can move quickly on this. This has been sitting around for some time, so we'd like to move as quickly as possible.
This is land-
This is land purchase to actually place the system on-
Repair system.
Yes, sir. The repair area and the system will actually be designed on this piece of property. We found a suitable location for the septic system to be on this piece of property.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So the action request is authorize the purchase of real property located at 5301 Friendly Baptist Church Road and 0 Friendly Baptist Church Road, Union County Tax Parcel 08231002C and 08231002B, in the amount of $140,000, and authorize the county manager to execute all necessary contracts and documentation to officiate this such purchase. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have county manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of items of interest for the board. The first, tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we will hold a groundbreaking for the Southwest Regional Library, much anticipated, long-awaited groundbreaking. It will be at 1515 Cuthbertson Road in Waxall, just adjacent to the Cuthbertson Middle School. We encourage everyone that would like to attend to please come out and join that celebration if we break ground for that new library facility. The second thing that I'd like to make the board aware of is that this Friday morning, November the 19th, at 9:00 AM, North Carolina Department of Transportation will hold a bridge dedication in honor of Sergeant Jeffrey W. Green from the Union County Sheriff's Office. As you all are aware, Sergeant Green was killed in the line of duty some years ago, and a group that supports, is auxiliary group with the Union County Sheriff's Office, has petitioned North Carolina DOT to dedicate the Skyway Bridge, or Skyway Drive Bridge that crosses over Highway 74 in his honor. That will begin at 9:00 AM this Friday at 1601 Skyway Drive. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to wish all my fellow commissioners a very happy Thanksgiving. Extend that also to county staff and to the citizens of Union County. I pray that we can, in this challenging time, truly cultivate in our hearts an attitude of gratitude. Thank you.
Commissioner Ray?
Thanksgiving is one of my favorite times of the year, and I would echo what Commissioner Williams said. I hope everybody gets to enjoy some private time with their families and be thankful. And I appreciate the other commissioners and all that they help us do, help me do, and hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I made reference a little bit to it in my invocation. That first Thanksgiving, people like to think about turkey and dressing and that kind of thing, but the pilgrims were primarily thankful for the fact that they had survived and were still alive. We spend a lot of time nowadays at Thanksgiving talking about turkey and dressing and pumpkin pie and all that great food that we're going to enjoy. And I've seen some things recently, people complaining about cost and things like that. It's a tough time out there, and it's been said many times, but about 1.5% of this country are actually engaged in production agriculture and produce the food for the other 99%. With the impact of COVID, there's been severe drought in the western cattle regions producing estates of this country, and farmers and ag producers are under a tremendous amount of stress right now. So whether you're eating turkey or ribeye or tofu or whatever you choose to eat, it's probably produced by a farmer in this country. And so I hope you'll think about them when you enjoy your Thanksgiving meal. Thank you.
I had the privilege of attending a recognition for veterans our sheriff's office put on. This is a group of individuals that serve themselves daily, like our veterans did. I just want to commend the sheriff's office for outstanding event that they put on in recognition for current and past vets. You set the bar very high. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend. Secondly, we had also our air show where we recognized veterans and our ROTC, and we had a number of students from our local high schools that excel in ROTC. We were able to recognize them. That was put on by our veterans. The air show was put on by Monroe, and they need to be commended. They did an excellent job. The recognition of the veterans and the junior ROTC was facilitated by our Veterans Service Office, and they do an outstanding, outstanding job of supporting our veterans. I know a lot of our community is not aware of what lengths they go to to take care of veterans, and for that, I am thankful. And that's one of the things I am thankful for this Thanksgiving. We're very blessed. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening. I'm sorry, we got a closed session, hadn't we? I move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes, in accordance with GS 143318A3, to consult with an attorney and order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and in accordance with GS 14331811A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property. All in favor?
Aye.